The order of the Newburyport zoning board of appeals. My name is Ken Swanton. I'm the vice chair. Our chair cannot be with us this evening. We'll start off by taking attendance and establishing a quorum. So please say hi here or present, Mr. Delisle.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Shagden.
Here.
Lynn Scow.
Here.
And here, Ken Swanton. So we have five lefts. And that's, we will add the five voting members this evening. We have three hearings. The first hearing is for one R. Horton Street. And thankfully, Samid, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Members of the Board. For the record, Lisa Mead, me telling across to thirty Green Street and report on behalf of Matt and Kaylee Whittington. With me this evening is Ben Taylor, who's also my colleague and has been working on this project. We were here about a month ago and had a discussion about the Whittington's proposed addition on the left side of their structure, like the addition, which is an extended dining room. The board had concern, given the length or the distance to the sidelines and the lot coverage. And so we went back and talked with a few people and we're back to the stuff the chambers have made. Can you go to the next slide, please? So what we did was, we previously had proposed a left side setback of 1.8 feet. And it's currently 9.8 feet. And the lot coverage went from 30.5% to 34.2%. As I said, the board members were concerned about that. And so what we're proposing to do is to increase the side setback slightly and decrease the lot coverage slightly. As part of this exercise, we went out there with the, I actually went out with the building inspector as well as the deputy fire chief to talk about the public safety issues they might have or building code issues they might have relative to the location of the addition. And they are fine with the proposed changes. Can you go to the next slide, please? So on this slide, you can see that the proposed mudroom is now reduced and it's 3.2 feet from the sideline. So we made it more narrow and 3.1 in the rear where the stairs go off. And then it is, it goes back into the, behind the house, we shifted it back a little bit to two, by 2.1 feet. One of the questions one of the board members had is why don't you put it on the rear? The reason we don't put it on the rear is because of the rear yard setback. So we moved it into the rear yard as far as we can without violating the rear yard setback. So the result is that it's now 3.1 feet from the sideline and 33.3% of block coverage. Go to the next slide. So again, here you see the proposed addition. And what they've done is have an open entryway in that porch. And then the solid part of the addition starts right behind that. And that's the front view. Next slide. And then here we have it from the side. You'll see one of the differences here is there are no windows on the side. And we use skylights instead, and that was to address a building code issue from the fire chief, excuse me, the building inspector. I believe if you are five feet or less from the sideline, you can't have windows on the side of the structure. And so that's the result. And next slide, please. And then here you can see the rear. We still open up with the French doors into the backyard. And the next slide. And then that's the opposite side, which of course nothing is happening to on the opposite side. So one of the, and my clients had wanted to have me make this really clear that, you know, this is a now 150 square foot addition. It was 176 square feet-ish before. They're really trying to get just a little bit of space to be able to have basically a dining room table on their first floor, which they can't currently have. So they are able to have some kind of family space with their young son. And so we're hoping now that based upon the prior presentation, where this entire end of the Ward Two South End is pretty tight. This is not an unusual condition. As we noted before in our photographs of the neighborhood and that we believe that the proposed modification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And the public safety issues that were raised before have been addressed after our meeting on site with the fire department and building inspector. And with that, I'd happy to answer any questions.
Okay, with that, the next step in that public hearing is for anybody who's here who would like to make a comment either for or against or ask a question or say anything. You have an opportunity now to be heard. We'll start with anybody in the room and then see if there's anybody out on our Zoom call. Would anybody like to weigh in on this or ask a question on this application? Okay, seeing none. Hayden, is there anybody with their hand up out there?
Not this time.
I see only two people, one of. And if you would like to be heard, you have to push, raise your hand. All right, I see no questions or comments from the public. The next step is for various board members here to ask questions. Who would like to go first?
Oh, it's good for questions.
Sure.
Just a few. Can you summarize the responses to the neighbors to this proposal, to the extent that they are present and available?
Sure. We, at the last submission, when it was in the last, closer to the lot line, we had letters of support from all its surrounding neighbors and in particular the two that are immediately adjacent to the left.
Okay. And could you expand a bit on your discussions and who did you speak to in the fire department and the planning office?
Deputy Chief, oh my God, Barry Salt, Deputy Chief Salt. This Deputy Chief ran there for so long, I had to forget Barry's name. So Deputy Chief Salt, who is the fire prevention officer.
And what were the nature of the discussions there?
So I took them out. I had the existing plans. I had the proposed plans and we were literally right there on site. I asked them if they, I told them what the proposal was and I asked them if they would have any concerns related to a proposed addition there at that location. And I listened to what they had to say. Deputy Chief Salt had absolutely no concerns whatsoever. He noted that getting around the other side was simple enough and it was easy to get around both sides. He didn't, he did not have an issue. The only concern that Greg Earls, the building inspector, had was related to the windows. Otherwise, he didn't, you know, from a public safety point of view, he was fine.
Thank you. Who would like to comment next or ask questions? I've got no questions.
I have no questions either.
How about Lynn? Do you have anything you'd like to ask?
I don't have any additional questions. Thank you.
So that brings us to deliberations where we go around the table and each person indicates whether they would support this or not. And keep in mind the two-pronged test for special permit. Who would like to begin?
I can start.
Okay.
I guess the first prong, no additional of a new non-conformity. There isn't one. Then the proposed changes will not substantially be more detrimental. I'm going to fall back on our previous meeting where I think majority of us felt that the addition was too close to the side yard lot line. And also it was quite a large, not a large addition, but more of an intensity on the the lot coverage. I think it was 20 something percent and went up to 34. Obviously, the applicant has listened to the board and shrunk everything. And I think with the addition as proposed today, having 3.1 feet on the side and only 33.3% lot coverage, I think, I think I would find this as an acceptable addition and would support it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shagden. I just realized and I didn't ask my question, so I'd like to to pause in the deliberation for a moment. Could you just refresh my memory? When was this house built?
This addition on this house was built in 2003. This part of the condominium was built, I believe, in 2003. I have to look back in my.
So it's a two-unit condominium and the older part was there for a long time.
Yeah, right.
But the part that this family lives in is the part that was built in 2003?
Correct. I think, I think it was 2003, but.
But this century.
Yeah, oh, yes, yes, for sure.
And how many square feet is this? How big is this house?
In total?
Yeah. Have that handy?
This side of the, is small. Second, I have full square. Living area, I believe on this side is 1,444 square feet.
1,444?
1,100.
Okay, it's a two-story, so that's about the same at each level?
No, no, that's, that's the living area for the whole unit.
No, I understand. Is it, is it about half that for the first floor?
540 square feet.
540, okay. And could, Hayden, could you put up the site plan for one moment? Could you blow up the site plan? Now, you mentioned why you can't expand off the back because obviously with a 25-foot setback, you're, you don't much room there to expand. What about expanding to the right?
That's the other, that's exclusive use area for the other unit?
Oh. Okay. All right, thank you. Those were my questions. Back to deliberations. Mr. Shagden has deliberated. Do I have to restate? No. I think our meditator has you. I've already replicated. Who would like to go next?
I will add my comments. I agree with Mr. Shagden. I, I find that the efforts here to address the board's concerns are laudatory. I'm convinced that the safety issues which were raised by the zoning board have been addressed and I find that this will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, given the character of the neighborhood, particularly the fact that the neighbors have approved and this is a dense, densely constructed area. And this is not, although it's certainly tight, it certainly is not out of character with the neighborhood. So for those reasons, I would approve this application.
Okay, thank you. Stephen or Lynn, who would like to go next?
I'm happy to go. I would echo the comments of my colleagues and I would, I would say especially I do appreciate the effort to address the safety issues that we had raised before about the, the lack of space. And so I do appreciate having that information, feedback from the fire department especially. And I would be inclined to support the application.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with my colleagues here. I think that the, the safety issues and the, the consultation with both the fire department and the building commissioner is helpful to, to understand their perspective with respect to the public safety issues. And as to the substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, we did discuss the tightness and they've brought it back from 1.8 feet off the line to 3.2 feet off the line. So that is, that's something. But we were at 9.8, or you are at 9.8 currently, where 20 feet is, is required. Is it substantially more detrimental? It's hard. Again, this remains a very hard case where you have the, the old fire station, the back of the old fire station practically on the lot line. Is this more detrimental than, to the neighborhood is the question? So that's, that's a tough issue. With respect to the lot coverage, the applicant has brought it down a little bit too as it was over anyway, but they're down to 30.5% lot coverage. Oh, I'm sorry. That was, that's the existing is 30.5 and they're at 33.3. Is that right?
That's correct.
And it was 34.8 or something like that?
Two.
Two, okay. Yeah, okay. So it's come down a little bit. So again, as the measure here with respect to density, this is still, still a tough one for me. I think I'm more, I'm more inclined to support it than I was last meeting. But it remains, this remains a tough, a tough application.
Thank you. You know, I, I echo some of what Mr. Delisle just said. You know, the South End is a pretty tight place. A lot of houses that were built a century or two ago are inches off a lot of them. This house was built in this century. I mean, this is a very different kind of house. And we see a lot of applications, many in the South End, to expand a building where someone is not intensifying the use, they're not getting closer to the lot line. They're just kind of going along. We see quite a few of those, as you know. Some of them, we got, the addition is often set back a little bit, which helps. It's pretty rare for us to see one where it's a straight intensification, where somebody is going to the, to a side lot. My concern, a couple of concerns, but if we start approving significant intensifications, because I clearly, I can't remember the last one. I worry that an awful lot of people might want to intensify to their side lot line. And it is a very dense neighborhood. The coverage is also already over. I realize it's not going up as much as it is this time. I realize this proposal is a step in the right direction, but I, I continue to be reluctant to support this because of the reasons I indicated. And that's why I am. So with that, the next step would be to take a vote. And would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move that these requests for special permit for non-conformities for one Horton Street rear be approved.
I'll second the motion.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And we are going to vote. Mr. Shagden?
Yes.
The Scow?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
No.
And I'm, I would also vote no. So it's three to two. It needs four to pass, so the application does not pass. That gets us to our next special permit hearing, which is for 87 High Street. And I just want to say before we start here that we, you may recall at our last meeting, we voted as a board to hire a consultant. And the consultant has been hired and my understanding is they're going to take about a month to provide input to us. So we obviously can't be making a decision tonight until we get the input from our consultant. But if you, I understand you would like to, knowing that, you would like to present anyway. And I don't particularly have a problem with that. If you present though, I think we also need to throw it open. Let anybody who's here who wants to make a comment in this hearing make a comment. So with that as the ground rules, you're welcome to begin. If you might introduce who's ever a part of this.
Sure. So are you opening the public hearing then, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, yes. We are now opening the public hearing for 87 High Street for a special permit.
Thank you very much. For the record, Lisa Mead, me telling across to thirty Green Street and report. And with me is my colleague, Brian Clemmons, also Andy Sidford, who is the architect on the project, and Kyle Whitehead, who's here from Mid Hill Timber Frames, and Ben Becker is in the back, who's the contractor on the project. The client, Mr. Healy, is out of town, so he is online as well. I do want to just say for the record, I feel compelled to do this for my client's sake, to note an objection to the board discussing this at the last meeting prior to the opening of the public hearing, notwithstanding the fact that there was an administrative discussion related to hiring a consultant within the ordinance and taking comments from the public. So I just want to put that on the, on the record. And I also appreciate the fact that we're going forward tonight because I think it's important that the facts of what is happening here, I'm actually get on the record because I think there's been some confusion from folks. There's been a number of plans submitted over a period of time, which I think I was probably confusing to the board. And we're trying to straighten all of that out. And then obviously if there's more information the board needs or there are questions that arise, we want to be able to either answer them tonight or be able to provide that information prior to the next meeting. So I think that would be the most efficient thing to do as well. I want to also be clear that Mr. and Mrs. Healy purchased this property in November of 2022. The reason that's important is because the underlying permits that allowed the barn to be turned and reconstructed originally or constructed originally with an addition on were granted in 2007. The property has changed hands three times since the Tolans, who were the owners in 2007, originally received the permits and asked to renovate and turn the barn on its axis, so to speak, and actually converted to a residence. That was in 2007. They started that, but they didn't complete it. But it had changed hands from the Tolans in November of 2013 to the Wolfs. And then the Wolfs to the Nichols in 2018. And then the Nichols to the Heelys in 2022. And now the Heelys would like to save this barn. It's got significant problems, which we're going to show you in a minute. But I think that that history is important because the Heelys are getting some plaque potentially for the condition of the barn. So if you could go to the first slide, please. So the DCOD, I might add, was adopted in 2014. The original permits were issued in 2007 to allow the work to be done on the barn. The property includes a single-family home and a carriage house that were constructed around 1799. It's located in the HSR zoning district and the DCOD zoning district. So what Mr. Healy proposes to complete is that construction was authorized by the 2007 special permit for non-conformities. That is to turn the barn and put an addition on the rear. There was also a 2000 special permit for use, allowed an additional residence on the lot. He does not propose to have this being a residence. He has, proposes it to have it be accessory to the residential use. And there was a 2007 variance to allow the dimensional relief, to allow the second residence for frontage on the lot, which also is not material because he's not going to use it as a residence. However, due to the current condition of the barn and the now DCOD requirements, because the proposal is to dismantle the barn, renovate it, reconstruct it, rebuild it, and I'm going to let experts talk about that, it requires a DCOD permit because that's considered demolition, even though it will be reconstructed and/or part of it saved and rebuilt. In 2008, the Tolans commenced the project, as I indicated earlier. And according to Andy, who coincidentally has been involved with all these various owners through the years, they started in 2008. It commenced, they poured the foundation and built the first floor framing, and then they put the barn on top of that framing. The, then however, the owners sold the property before the project was completed. And then following the Wolf's ownership, they sold the property to the Nichols in 2018. And according to Andy, they proceeded to continue to work on the improved volume of the structure, but not the change of use. Those plans were then put on hold. They later sold the property to the Heelys. The Heelys then continued their work with Andy and now also Kyle relative to the provision and rehabilitation of the barn or carriage house. I also want to note, as I said earlier, the Tolans did commence construction on this project. There has been an issue raised relative to the validity of the work that continues or could continue under the special permit for non-conformities in 2007. I want to be clear that the case law, as well as the statute, chapter 48, section nine, paragraph 15, is very clear that a permit will lapse if substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced. In that instance, it was two years. The statute has since been changed, three years, except for good cause or in the case of permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause. And so the construction began before the permit lapsed. I want to give an example. The leading case on this is an SJC case out of Bellingham, LaBiscia versus the Building Planning Board, Bellingham, 454 Mass., 123 in 2009, where a special permit was issued by the planning board in 1985. And they commenced construction in 1986 and work stopped in 1988. No work was done. There was no date in the special permit by which the work, by time the work had to be done. And in 2005, they went to sell the property and the new owners wanted to continue the construction. And the planning board said no. I'm a little familiar with this because we represent a planning board. The permit had, we said no, they said no because the permit had lapsed due to the passage. However, she indicates that anything more is needed and found that the project could continue despite the passage of almost 20 years. And in fact, it did. So in this instance, construction started very clearly. The permit was recorded. The permit then runs with the land. It didn't lapse. And the owners, the owners subsequent have a right to rely on that permit. In this instance, the owners are relying on the permit, special permit for non-conformities. So at the time, in 2008 also, the owner's expert at the time, Mr. Sturgis of Preservation Timberframe, actually was advising on the project to the Tolans and Mr. Sidford. We included in our package his report of 2008. You'll note the date on that report is a little later than when the permit was issued. The reason for that is he just didn't write up a report until after he was advising from the very beginning of that project. The applicant's current consultants, Mr. Whitehead and Mr. Sidford, have determined that the carriage house is collapsing due to inadequate repairs stacked over the historic timber frames. The Heelys would like to save the carriage house. And that is only possible through carefully dismantling it and rebuilding the early 19th century building. The process that would restore the historic barn, similar process that restored a historic barn further down on High Street at 195 High Street. The project here meets all the DCOD requirements, as we will review, and has already been to the Historic Commission. I'm sure you've read the Historic Commission's report. You'll see that the chair visited the site and reported extensively about the concerns in, with the barn. Not just the active safety of the barn right now. And much to his chagrin. of the barn right now. And much to his chagrin, I believe he agrees, and you can see that in the report, that something has to be done. So at this time, what I'd like to do is go to, go to the next slide. There we go. So here's the site plan. And you can see High Street is on the right-hand side. The main residence is there in the larger gray. And then the carriage house is at the head of the car. So that's where it is. Next slide, please. And again, here's an aerial photo, just to get a better view of it. Next slide. And here's a view of the driveway on eighty-five and eighty-seven. And of course, this is eighty-seven High Street. Next slide, please. Here's the Form B on the property, which is, of course, a beautiful piece of property. Next, please. And you go through that. Next slide. So with this, I'm going to turn it over to Andy. To, I mean, these are the existing conditions photos, so maybe you and Kyle can talk about the current condition as you go through these photos.
Sure. Hello, Andrew Sidford. Yeah, I've been working on this project from the beginning with several different owners. So here you can see that, at the time, just to clarify one thing. Back in two thousand seven, the branch was requested for a second residence. It was intended to be used as prior to get approval as a second residence, even though the intent wasn't to use it as a guest house. So the current owners have no interest in doing that. They just want to use it for themselves. So this shows the carriage house moved, and there was a new foundation and concrete. It's intended to use the first floor for a single bay garage. So there's a new concrete foundation. The carriage house has been moved. And in the back, I mean, picture on the left, you'll see the bulkhead that was approved. And just to the right of you, a little harder to see. Is the outline of the addition which was approved in the first place. Lisa said that first floor deck was built and then covered. It was intended to be finished at that time. This for personal reasons, they, they had to move. So. Next slide. This shows, this shows the side, I think, closest to the neighbor, the current condition. Next slide. This shows the rear portion. Again, you can see now, look there, there's the bulkhead, and there's the addition that was, that was the foundation. First floor was framed, and that is what a brick just, that was put on at the time to help preserve it. Next slide. This shows the interior. Yes, we, the intention was to have parent service. We did the whole frame, and actually, we gave the report to the new owners, and the intent was reach out to him. He wasn't available this time around. The, the intent has always been to preserve as much as possible. I do want to note that when we when we started this process with the HCC, they started with a description of a carriage house on Dexter Lane, that they particularly liked the approach, which was to add the insulation to the outside, thereby preserving the interior. And way out that that was one of our projects, and that our intent was to do the exact same here. We have some beautiful interior, exterior sheathing is all exposed on the inside, so the intent is to was always, has always been to try and preserve as much of the interior as possible, add insulation to the exterior. And so this is showing the current condition. The, the big difference between this is that the condition of this frame is considerably worse than than the one on Dexter Lane. So, and the other change that's happened since that when we first looked at this back in two thousand seven, some of the, even then, I think five of the first floor posts were, were structurally essentially gone. Most of the faces had been rotted. And so a lot of the primary members had been sort of covered, I think, with two by pressure treated two by, I think it was a meant to, way to cover the sins, but also to provide some measure of temporary structural support. So this shows the first floor. I don't know how much you can see, but it brings, I've got college advice as well. Do you want to point out?
No, yeah, we're, I mean, it helped that Aaron back in two thousand eight did his report, and it's, you know, two and a half pages. It's not super detailed, but it's laying out a sort of a philosophy of how you can restore this. And we agree with them a hundred percent. Now, but, and the same thing that we agree with is, is that, for sure, is that in order to restore, you've got to take this thing down. You know, very carefully, get the document first, take it down, mark all the timbers, make sure you run it back where they go, and try to restore every single one of these timbers that you can. So that's our intent. And I'm, Aaron's a pretty smart guy, so I, you know, I'm not, I'm happy to argue. So it'll be, you know, hopefully an asset and you can link on to as well. It is, I mean, I will say when you go through four, still a couple of wrenches there, for a dumb way. So sixteen years later. I think no damage has happened in four years. And so the reality is, we're not going to really know what we can save. I mean, he mentions two posts. Maybe we can save those, maybe we can start part of them. I mean, six, there's six, there's eight posts. He's saying six of them are two in the front that are over. That could be saved. We've got a lot of, you know, scarfing, you can scarf new post boots on, you can scarf the top to class the the plate. And so, you know, once we take it down and get it on our sawboards. We're just going to try to save as much of the fabric as we can. There is one, I think Aaron will also agree with, that, I don't know when it changed. It's been, you know, back in the day, people were using way too much epoxy to save these buildings. And that's very, it's detrimental, you know, because now it can't, that piece, you can't go back. Once you take a big timber and you pour epoxy resin in there, and it just travels up through the timber deck, you've actually done more damage to it than you would. I mean, sure, you saved it for the time period for the, but worth looking at. Trying to save the same for the next one hundred years. And so what Andrew was talking about, this is really important, is we're going to put a skin on the outside of this building in order to bring more structure to it. It's going to be insulated panel walls and then also on the roof. And that's going to help. We have some areas that are tired. We can put some new tenants on there and we can put some judgment on there and such. But by putting a skin on there, I mean, you're really, the good news is that if you're somebody you know, a hundred years from now, you can remove these panels. They're all screwed on. So again, it's not limiting. You're not doing detrimental damage to the frame. But you are protecting it. And if somebody wanted to go backwards and say, hey, I want it, you know, I want a carriage barn. I don't want a game room. I don't know. They could take the panels off. But in the meantime, because we're proposing to put these panels on, particularly on the roof system, because those raptors are, you know, undersized. So we're going to have a structure within those insulated panels, structural insulated panels. So within those panels on the roof, we can put, you know, like LBLs or something to help deep up that roof system. So the when we get to the roof, you'll see, that's kind of the cool thing. You walk into this little winder and you pop your head out. And that's where you get the, you know, the real moment where you know, whoa, this is really cool. But there's some stuff in there that was added that really, to get it back to seventeen ninety-nine, even though it's helped stabilize the current, that needs to come off. And, you know, we're trying to get it back to seventeen ninety-nine. So there's some stamped on two buys for between the
So we have a bunch of other, so maybe we can go through that to
other guys. I did just want to point out that there's some interpretation that's going to have to happen because it's been doctorate over the years. So there's since there's four bays and structure upstairs, and there's three bays downstairs. It's, it's not consistent. So there's a bit of interpretation. This shows a picture of upstairs, which is the better shape, and you can see all the sheathing for the roof and the exterior of the walls, which is well, the reason why we want to insulate on the outside is so that when you come inside, you'll, you will see this, which was the same approach we did at Dexter Lane.
And so those, those purlins are a little undersized, but again, if we put, we can, we can save those collar ties, which are kind of cool in the depth of half lap. Could save those, we can save the continuous purlins go across the roof. They're undersized, but by putting these stressing panels on there, you know, it'll, it'll need code. You can help save this one. Otherwise, if you get into that scenario, which is ruining the fabric, and you take every one of the purlins and you make them bigger. That's really not proper destruction, that's the issue. So we're trying to preserve as much as we can by using these exterior panels. If you look closely, you'll see there are also logs that have been put in. So again, there's sort of a mishmash of things over there.
Next slide. This shows the condition of the, some of the posts down the first floor, which essentially defies logic why they're still standing, but most of it has to do with some of the temporary shoring and some of the, the pressure tubes, the chill that was put on there. But you can see there completely that the dry rot has been, carpentry has continued their work. This shows some of the diagonals that are, that are, many of them are missing, and some that even these that are here are not actually connected. It's rotted through all connectors.
So you go to the elevations, I think, Caitlin. And Andy, you can review what's being proposed.
Yeah, the, the elevations have been altered slightly because of the new layout of interior spaces. We, the windows actually were ordered for the original jobs, so we're reusing. Those windows were stored. And so we're reusing, I think, ninety-five percent of those windows, and we just put them, pulled them a little bit. Next slide. This slide's important because I know there were questions from, from the neighbors. The building was, was, foundation was placed, we always intended to add the insulation to the outside, so the foundation was placed away from the setback. In order to allow us to add insulation. So you'll see on the right edge there. The foundation actually carries through, but the, this, the addition does not have insulated panels because it doesn't need to. It's, it's just two by six construction. So if you look on the right side, you'll actually see the wall thickens back where it goes by the carriage house. So, and we modified our drawings a little bit because we're going with the stress, stress can panels, which take an inch out of what was originally proposed. So all of the new insulation will be, all of the new insulation and siding will be inside of the setback. And that was the intent from the beginning, was that, that was why it was pulled off. Six inches at one end, and I think five inches at the other end, plus still accommodate insulation that would be, and such, that would be added to it. Excellent. And I want to say this, the view from the driveway, again, very little change from what was proposed two thousand seventy, including original, including the same windows. Next slide, please. And this shows that the driveway originally, there was going to be, as I said, there's a concrete slab that's been forged because it was going to be a functional garage for parents. Now, it's not going to be, but we, we kept the sliding garage, the sliding door. For the appearance of the garage, even though the access is to the right now, and it won't be used as a garage bay.
And so these are, these are, you've not seen these yet. We used, we asked Kyle to create a three D model. Show at this point what he believes is going to be saved or refurbished, redone. So that the goal is that by the end of this, assuming seeing the board is going to approve it, you'll have a document that will show exactly what's going to happen. So we're going to be able to carry on with that. Depending what the field changes need to happen as construction starts. This is similar, as I was familiar with, the board might not be, but the Historic Commission is, that Preservation Timberframe uses in their preparation, and I think it, it helps tells the story. So I'm going to turn it over to Kyle, who created this.
Okay, so there's, there's a lot of colors there, but and some of them, you know. There's, this is not completely a hundred percent up to date, like the timber, the white timber that you're seeing. In the front of the building, it actually is missing. I noticed that when I came in here today. And like Andrew was saying, there's, the original nineteen seventeen ninety-nine carriage house had down braces on every post. And so I hadn't gone to those, and our intention is to put those in there.
But I wanted you to be able to see that that's what, for our next meeting, you'll have a full, complete document of that, and hopefully it will have been done in consultation with the peer review person, so that you'll be able to have that document, which I think is critical to complying with the requirements of the DCOD. And if you go to the next slide, and then what I, what we just, sorry, the legend. Oh, yeah. Do you want to, let me go back one slide. And do you want to say what the legend says?
Okay, so the legend, the red ones are the, the rotted timbers, and I think we're Preservation Timberframe, in two thousand eight, saying these two front posts could be salvaged. So that might change. We'll know when we, we're going to know a lot when we probably get it to the point where the frame is still standing, but everything's off, the ceiling's off. And then we're going to do a lot of documentation, you know, while it's standing, and try to do our, you know, poke, poke around and the problem with rod, particularly when you had a house, a carriage house like this over the years, water is penetrating in from the outside. So if this stuff looks bad from the inside, there's a really good chance there's some rot on the, on the outside of that sheet and rod. So that's why I hesitate to say that all these posts are going to be. And also the two plates, Aaron is in agreeance with us as well, that they're, they're completely shot. So that's a, you know, that's another bad sign for the post, basically. If the plates are shot, the post tops are probably shot. And
So then orange.
Orange, yeah. Orange is the, these are the existing timbers that we're trying to salvage. So you can see that we're salvaging the whole roof system. We, you go up in there, there's those, we, in this model, we've removed all the stabilizing timings, if you will. So the whole roof system that was originally historic to the seventeen ninety-nine will be salvaged and restored. And then same thing with the the joists down below. The joists are a little undersized, but we're planning on doing a, another structural floor system above that where you can't see it. So to allow Matt to have his we're, you know, it's a forty pound floor load, that you need to have those things, you need to have a better function than that. So there'd be a force system in there you wouldn't see. So those joists would be covered up, but again, more of the sheeting. And then there'd be a, like LBLs or two by eights or something, floor system, that's going to help those joists. So that's the kind of the trick we try to do, because we want to be able to preserve the frame that you see as much as possible. So yellow, what is yellow? Okay, so these are new green timbers for architectural requirements. And so you have the back, the front door, the big window, the little window, and then where the winder was, those have to be replaced. And then there's going to be a regular code staircase for we're going up on the second floor. So blue, with the blue. Okay, so blue is existing term is to be used, but we'll need a wood scarf for a repair. And then white is the existing timber that can be salvaged and repaired due to the additional structural slate panel. So the stuff that's on the two gables, feel like we can salvage all those timbers. Because they're going to get, against, they're going to have all these structural panels, they're going to be screwed to it. And they're going to be they're half, they don't have that load that anything interior has. So they would have they'd be able to salvage, as is, and we'll put judgment in there and try to assess how, how life situation is.
Thank you. So that's essentially the, the process that we're going to go through. Caitlin, if you can go on now to the, I think, the next slide that has varnish on. There we go. So I, I'll just quickly go through the DCOD special permit criteria, Mr. Chair, and we can readdress this as we need to moving forward, but as you know, again, you know, we're using the term demolition. It concerns a lot of people, but that, it's the way it's defined in the ordinance. Which includes pulling or tearing down, raising or otherwise destroying more than twenty-five percent of all of the building's external walls. And here, because it will be coming down and going back up, it's considered demolition. And so that's why we're here. And I know that a lot of people, when they saw this, they were concerned, we're just going to take the whole building down and and that would be it. So it's because of the definition under the ordinance. Similarly, I would point out, you might recall, there was a property at two two seventy-six High Street that we moved, and that was considered demolition, right? And of course, we weren't actually demolishing that building, we just moved it. But because of the ordinance, it's considered demolition. So in that instance, we believe that preserving and repairing the carriage house, which is no longer reasonably capable to do is deterioration in inadequate repairs. That predate the applicant's ownership of the property and not from the collect. That in fact, we're in full compliance with the purpose of the ordinance. And as both Kyle and Andy have reviewed, clearly, the building needs a lot of care. Moreover, I just want to point out that we have been, the historic conditions required. I think that Glenn has provided a very detailed letter. And his personal observations concerning the need to actually rebuild this building. And at that time, when it was presented to the Historic Commission, this amount of detail about what was going to be preserved and not preserved wasn't even available to them. There was much less detail, and it was more of a wholesale removal. And so obviously, Kyle and Mr. Healy and Andy have worked very hard to really pinpoint what can be saved. And or restored and or reused. And that, of course, will be and provide the board with all the document, documentation required about the historic nature of the property, and we've done that to you and to the historic commission. Third is that we provide substantial evidence, there is no remaining market value or reasonable use of the carriage house. I think that what what we're going to do is wait and see what Mr., what your peer review person says. But I would point out to you, this is city's assessors have a value on this structure on High Street at thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars. That's the assessed value. So I'm hoping that information, along with the information from Mr. Sturgis and what you have before you will allow the board to make that necessary climbing. Fourth is that, of course, you have a right to engage an expert, and you've done that. Fifth is that we would provide you any more documentation that you require, and of course, we will do that. And then the sixth is the only remaining that we need your permission to restore the carriage house. Seventh is that we cannot do the D C O D. And that is under section ten H seven A. One is that the request to use is allowed in the table of use regulations, and of course, this is continuing to be a single family home, and that's not going to change. Number two is that requested use is essential and desirable to public convenience. Here, since the ordinance allows the property to be used as single family use, then of course, it is desirable and convenient. More importantly, in this instance, the D C O D also allows for the restoration and preserving of the carriage house, and that is squarely in line with the purpose of the the D C O D. The requested use will not create any undue traffic congestion, that's not going to change. That's still a single family home, so that's not going to change at all. The requested use won't overload the public water drainage or sewer system. Again, the size of the building is on the property is changing, so that won't be impacted. There are no special regulations that affect this particular use in the ordinance. The requested use won't impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining district. And here, the single family use isn't changing at all. And nor are we trying to make the carriage house a residence. Seven, the requested use will not, by its addition to the neighborhood, cause an excess of that particular use, and of course, we're not changing the use. And the proposed use is army intent and purposes of the ordinance. Again, the continued single family home use is in line with the person intent of the ordinance, as is the restoration and and preservation of the carriage house. And then finally, that the use, the proposed use won't be conducted in a manner so as to admit any dangerous, malicious, or injuries or otherwise objectionable activities, and of course, the restoration of the carriage house won't, we're not proposing to do anything else in the property. So with that, Mr. Chair, we're happy to answer any questions or listen to any public comment and help provide any information the board would like.
Thank you, Attorney Mead, for your presentation. The next step in this public hearing is to see if anybody in the room would like to make a comment, either a for or against, or simply ask a question. If questions are asked, we're not in a mode here where people will be, where the applicant will be answering questions directly, but we'll be taking down your questions here on the board, and when we have a chance, we may ask your questions. So it appears we have somebody who's interested in speaking.
Where do I stand?
Where you are is fine, as long as
Yeah, where you are is fine, if you don't mind just speaking as books and just speak to this, I will device, that'd be great. Can I sit here next to?
That'd probably be fine, yeah. And if you could say your name and where you live, that'd be great.
My name is Jared Igerman, my wife and I live at eighty three High Street, which is not a direct abutter, it's one lot away in a condominium from the, from the site. Yeah, just I to get some things on the record, because you've opened the hearing, I know it's going to be continued, because you don't have your conditions report yet. So first, just to explain, you know, a lot of us only got a notice in the mail saying demolition, so Attorney Mead's right that on the face of it, we didn't know what was going on. So I was one of the abutters that wrote staff to say, well, could I get a copy of the application? And I read through it. One of the things that was unclear was what permits had already been obtained. And you heard from Attorney Mead, there were, we know from the brief, the brief came in last week, it was very helpful. And they gave book and page of the of a variance and a special permit. But at the time that I was emailing with staff, they couldn't locate that. So initially, the zoning enforcement officer didn't know that there had been something recorded, I think it was probably indexed under the wrong last name. Because the, although the tollens were the actual residents, somebody else's name was on the, on the, on the index. So yeah, and I know the zoning of what's vested and what isn't, so I wasn't really expected to get in, expecting to get into a debate about that, because I don't, I don't even know what the city's position is, you know, they got to figure that out and tell you whether there needs to be additional zoning relief or not. Obviously, the petitioner thinks no, and they cited cases which are on point. And but one complicating factor, which I only learned today, is there's actually a third approval in two thousand seven, which was a section six C special permit that the planning board grants. And that appears not to have been recorded, but based on the case cited by the applicant's attorney, that's not always necessary that you have to record them to use them. So that's another decision that the zoning enforcement officer has to make where they use it. But in any case, it's good that you're not ready to vote tonight, because you got a zoning enforcement officer has to tell you that she thinks the permits are required, and you know, I don't know. I can't tell you from talking to them that the foundation was poured, so there was a foundation poured. And we think it's within two years, because she has building permits, she said. But anyway, that's, that's not what I thought we were going to talk about tonight. I I just wanted to, you know, recommend that you you stick to the procedure. They know each other, so that's great, you know, so, you know, really, the engineer, the report's going to say what it says, and that actually is going to have in it the value information you need, because baked into that is they have to give you a cost estimate. So obviously, you know, if it's superhuman effort, a quarter million dollars to shore up the building or whatever, you know, this person will tell you. And and, you know, like, like the rest of you, I'm not structural engineer, and I I'm eager to see what they say. And I also appreciate that, you know, now we know a lot more than we did after New Year's Day, which is that there is an attempt to save as much of the fabric as possible, and you will have the power, if you find that there is no reasonable use or or market value left, then then you can still adopt conditions, and I'd urge you to do that to make sure it happens. And don't forget to look at the conditions from two thousand seven, because there were conditions imposed then. And so, you know, to the extent that there's a vested rights, those still are in effect. But even if they're not in effect, it tells you what the neighbors, I wasn't one of it, by the way, I I moved in the year after. What the neighbors and and the board, boards decided in two thousand seven. So for example, in the section six C, there's a requirement that there be an arbor vitae preserved for perpetuity. And I think you'll hear from my neighbor at eighty, eighty eighty five High Street, I'm at eighty three, I may have said the wrong address. That they, that's important. So so if you are going to approve this, you may want to keep that in mind. And then finally, just on procedural stuff, you know, there was no, you know, when when I appeared last time, there was a motion to continue. And so the chair was not to opening, did not open the public hearing, which I confirmed on the record. So we didn't talk about our own personal opinions about the condition of the building. It just suggested that to save time, you know, you should hire the expert now, and actually, the board was already headed that way. But so I really, there was no, there was no public testimony on the merits, it was only on should you grant the continuance and should you continue, should you condition the continuance on hiring an expert, that's all. If you hadn't hired the expert that night, you'd be hiring him tonight, and you'd be a month, you'd be two weeks behind. So I don't know if that would really have done anyone any good. And finally, two, two points raised by counsel. So, yeah, Glenn, Glenn Richards is the chair of the N H C, I don't know his I mean, obviously, that gives him some qualifications and standing, but the report from the N H C is supposed to be a significance report only. So although he he volunteered his personal opinion on the condition, and and you can take into account as as persuasive or not, it's up to you. But that's actually not in on the ordinance. The ordinance is that the report of the historical commission is just limited on significance, and then you get a conditions report from an expert on what's it going to take to save the building. So I I think Glenn's heart was in the right place, but it really is not appropriate, and it wasn't authorized by the commission, that was just his opinion. And then finally, on the value of the city assessor, I I have to make a very strong statement on that, that you know, that's not an appraisal. I mean, I know under, everyone knows with a wink and a nod that, you know, assessments are supposed to be fair market value, but you know, let's not kid ourselves. When a tax, when a taxpayer gets an assessment on their garage for thirteen thousand dollars, but they know that it's worth more than that, they're not exactly appealing themselves, so they can pay more taxes. Anytime you get a mortgage, anytime that there's a transaction, there's a, people don't just look at the tax assessment, they they get an expert real estate licensed appraisal. So that's a bit of a red herring. And one final thing, you know, historically, in the report, assessments can be manipulated for political vengeance and so on. I will get into the details, but well documented. So just forget that, just stick with your expert on the conditions report, and and it sounds like he's he's respected and known, and and he'll, he'll tell you whether you can save the building or not. Thanks.
Thank you. Did anybody else here tonight like to make a comment? Yes, in the orange sweater, sorry. You'll be next.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Richards.
Could you indicate your name?
Ninety one High Street, I've lived at ninety one High Street since nineteen ninety one. I appreciate Attorney Mead giving us the history of what's been going on in the house and the property over the last probably twenty years, but a lot more has happened in the past. This is a very significant property, it's a greenlit property, the house was built in seventeen ninety. And the carriage house is an integral part of the whole property. It's a historical property that I think is very important. Before the tollen came to Newburyport, a gentleman by the name of Robert S. Miller restored the house in a very authentic manner to the standards of early nineteenth century. Buildings, walls, nails, everything was authentic. That house was a very historically restored house. When the tollen came in, with the help of Mr. Sidford, the house was literally taken apart from the inside and literally made modern. It has no historical characteristics inside the house. In addition, some additions were made on the outside, which are absolutely not historically architecturally valid for that house. The carriage house has stayed pretty much the same, and unfortunately, it has not been maintained, but it is still part of the historically significant property. The garden was also destroyed. It was a formal garden with boxwood, roses, trees. There was now a swimming pool and no evidence of the historical gardening. The last step in the destruction of this historical property is what is being proposed right now. Even though it may not be demolition, it is going to be, again, modernized in such a way that any historical evidence of this architecturally important property will essentially disappear, except for bits and pieces that have been quote unquote, kept to rebuild. So I have to be really clear that it is important that such a historically important property be preserved as best possible. Thank you very much for the amazing speaker.
Thank you for your comments. Your turn.
Yeah, good evening, I'm Andrew Varan, this is my wife Karen. We are the immediate abutters at eighty five High Street, Jared Zanker is technically under the same room. My interest, or our interest rather, in, you know, the the proposed development is not primarily the preservation of historic building materials, but the preservation of historic privacy. The existing arbor by the and hemlock order, mature trees that have been there for the entirety of the sixteen years that we've been residents. You know, our kids are now here, and I think as Attorney Mead noted, you know, as many as four different families have been in eighty seven, you know, for the time that we have been here. And I would say that that existing border barrier really is essential to keeping the peace. It's aesthetically attractive, it provides privacy, both to us and to, I think, the Heelys. So I think it's really a equal value to both of us. My concern about doing such an extensive demolition reconstruction, construction project so close to this existing hemlock order is that it will damage the trees. And I would like to see some plan put in place to preserve those conditions, if possible.
Okay, thank you for your comments, are you done?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, again, in terms of the the plans that we've seen thus far, and I think as Mr. Sidford said, you know, the the approach currently is to basically put an envelope, I think, on the existing building and admirable to preserve sort of the 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 historic integrity, which will remain encapsulated inside of it, but it does push the the building out closer to our property and closer to the trees.
Which is very close.
Yeah, which is very close, yeah, I think it'll be less than ten feet by the time it is is built to the property line. To say nothing of where it is to the trees, so that's, that's our concern.
And we have some pictures.
Yeah, it's helpful to the, to the, to the board, I can distribute these photographs.
We, it would be nice to have it, you know, there and ready too, so that whatever happens, because we've been thinking of our neighbors for many years, but as mentioned, we've had many neighbors come and go, so since we're all talking about it, it would be good to have this true order and putting right in what we can.
Sorry, did you indicate your name for us, did you get her name too?
Sorry, my name's Karen, again, I live at eighty five High Street.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Are you still with your comment?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here who, yes, we have several here?
My name is Rita Mahalik, fifty three Warren Street. I'm a board member of the Newbury Port Preservation Trust. I'm here tonight to read the recommendations of Newbury Port Preservation Trust co-presidents Linda Miller and Tom Colte Johnny. So on their behalf, councilors, the barn at eighty seven High Street has had a long life. It was built to last with a post and beam frame made of old second growth timber that is very strong. No building of this quality should be destroyed, and it needn't be. Repurposing and adaptive use, reuse is the way to go. There are many ways to reuse a building of this quality. For example, the carriage barn behind seventy nine High Street was converted to a wonderful residence, now lived in for one hundred years. You have written testimony from its current owner, Adelaide Carruthers. Among other reuses are storage, garage, workshop, office space, garden house, and music studio. Since this barn was illegally moved in two thousand seven, it acquired a new concrete foundation. Now it has the underpinnings to make it into something green, quotation marks, green. The greenest building is the one you already have. Newbury Port encourages green efforts. The resources in this barn are much too valuable to waste. As the next step in your special permit decision, the Newbury Port Preservation Trust supports an objective third party appraisal and a detailed restoration plan by an expert on historic timber frame buildings. Real preservation and adaptive reuse will encourage, encourage others to keep their outbuildings, which are so valuable to the city and are being lost at an alarming rate. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to make a comment? Stephanie?
Stephanie Nikotic, ninety-three High Street. I'm in a butter through eighty-seven High Street, not a director butter, but I am a legal butter, and like Mark Sendron, I've lived there since nineteen ninety-one. I remember all of the proceedings from two thousand and seven very well. And since those proceedings are being brought up, and some of the permitting back then apparently still has a life to it, I wanted to mention, just out of interest, maybe it's water under the bridge now, but the the carriage house at eighty-seven High Street was moved without permission. So it's, all of its permitting is after the fact, and I can remember Mr. Sidford going to, once there were complaints, going to the Historical Commission with apologies, because he didn't realize that moving a building under demolition delay, which was in effect at that time for that building, is something, demolition delay does cover moving a historic building. So that's just an interesting thing. I don't know what an impact it had on that building, which is now described as, you know, in very delicate condition, but it was moved before permitting. I appreciate very much Mark Sendron's comments about that property. It's how historic it is and how it has changed since two thousand and seven, and how it is, it is a very sad thing for our part of High Street that that is so. The special permit that was granted by the ZVA in two thousand and seven includes some special conditions voted for unanimously by the then ZVA in support of concerns of butters. And the special conditions are that no further subdivision of the property shall occur. Keeping in mind that what they were doing is turning the, wanting to turn the carriage house into a guest house, but that required that it be permitted as a residence. So we said, okay, you can't subdivide the property after this. And both of the units shall remain in common ownership. And the unit in the carriage house shall not be rented. That is part of the recorded, those are special permit conditions in the reported special permit. So I'm hoping that the ZVA will reaffirm those conditions if this special permit is still going to be considered valid. And because since two thousand and seven, we've had another type of use in Newburyport, a short-term rental unit. Although I understand the healies are not trying to turn this into a residence now, they are planning to make the carriage house habitable. And if that might be considered habitation for a short-term rental. And I think that the planning or Resiling Board of Appeals can condition that if the carriage house is restored and is, its use is made into a gaming exercise accessory use, that that use cannot be changed under the new short-term rental ordinance to become a short-term rental unit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nikotic. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment this evening? I don't see anybody in the room. Do we have Caitlin? If there's anybody online who would like to make a comment, this is the time to hit the raise your hand button. You see anybody?
No.
No. All right, so that we will close the public comment period. Normally, in a typical public hearing, we would now go to questions from the board, and then deliberations from the board, and then we'd take a vote. I don't see how we can deliberate, because we're still waiting for our report. But what is the feeling of the board? Do you want to take questions from the board at this time or not? What do you guys want to do?
I would like, if I, Mr. Chairman, could, I'd like, if the board has questions, we'd like to hear them so that we can, if we don't have answers tonight, we can get the answers or more information that the board may need for the next meeting.
Right, so you'd like us to ask questions. How do the board members feel? Do you want to, first, and this is unusual.
I'm going with the firm.
Clear?
Sure.
I hate going against the grain. So it sounds like the line, whatever it is, was taken off the old foundation and put on a new one?
Correct.
Did they rotate it?
Yeah, they rotated it.
So it was, it was parallel to High Street, now it's perpendicular?
Right.
Right. And they put it on a brand-new foundation in two thousand and seven?
Eight, two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight, not too long ago. And the thing stood up? I mean, it looks like a hunk of junk. How the hell would it stand up in two thousand and eight? Just, I'm just curious.
They were temperature controlled at that time.
Like a pant, like a lot. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't involved in stuff, thanks. I can't answer the question without that, so why don't Annie answer this question?
I mean, two thousand and eight is within our lifetimes.
Well, maybe yours.
I go way back. No, that's all. Thank you.
Miss Cal, are you still up there? Lynn?
Yeah, sorry, I am still here. I do have a question just about, I think Mr. Horan's had a question about moving it six inches closer to the property line. Is that, I guess, is that in line with the permit that was received back in two thousand and seven? Is that something that we're commenting on now, or, I mean, I'd like to get an answer to the question as to what the plan is, but I'm curious if it is in line with the permit, the special permit that was received previously?
If I could, so we're gonna, the planning office asked us for some clear plans related to the construction and the site plan that was approved in two thousand and seven. We have no intention of going closer than what was approved in two thousand and seven. The clarification that needs to come is that Mr. Sidford recalls that the plan was drawn so that the distance from the foundation to the lot line was the ten point five. But the plan also shows, of course, a siding going on to the building. So if that's clear from the plan, then that's exactly what's going to happen. Nobody's moving the building any closer. The clarification needs to happen when we get a clear picture of what the plan was. But if the distance measured is from the foundation, then of course you have the siding that goes on it, so it's going to be a couple of inches related to that. And I believe that was the comment that he made earlier related to the distance. And at the time, it was a ten-foot setback in the district. And so they were meeting that ten-foot setback, but they showed the ten-five to the foundation, and then they had the skin on the outside. So we're going to provide the clarification on that, but we're not moving anything at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything else, Lynn?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, you know, from my own, from my own perspective, I thought it was very helpful going through everything you went through. Also, thought it was, some of your experts that were here, I think that was very helpful. I learned a lot. I also thought some of the comments from the people who came tonight was all very helpful. I think we now know a lot more about this. And so when we get our consultant's report, I think we can have a a very good conversation. I just, I guess I have one little question, which is you did forward the consultant's report from last time, the same guy we hired.
Right.
But I read through it, I got back to the bottom, it says, now you'll see all my things in the attached Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah, I want to see that. Nobody has that, right?
Okay, all right. We'll wait for the updated version. All right, anyway, I just wondered what happened to that.
So we've requested continuance. I believe we're going to need a continuance for two meetings, because-
Yeah, I think that's-
Do you think that's safe as far as his timing?
I think two meetings is safe. The, I was actually concerned the next meeting would not be viable.
And he did, two weeks ago, he said it would be four weeks, so that should give him some-
It's fortunate that it started two weeks ago. Anyway, so what meeting would that be?
February twenty-seventh.
February.
Twenty-seventh.
February twenty-seventh, do we have opening that evening for this?
We do.
Okay, so we need a motion to continue to February twenty-seventh.
I'll make the motion to continue eighty-seven High Street to February, the meeting of, the evening of February twenty-seventh.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been seconded. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Miss Cal?
Hello?
Yes, sorry, I was on mute. Yes.
I know, I'm sorry. I shouldn't, I should have been to you last. I think of you in the middle of the table as we go around here. Mr. Shagnon?
Yes, and I vote yes as well. It's five. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was very helpful.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our last hearing this evening. We'd like to begin next hearing.
Yeah, beautiful.
Yeah.
All right, our next hearing is for twenty-seven Carter Street. We have a proposal for a special permit for nonconformities for twenty-seven Carter.
Oh, good.
Okay, so I guess you'll be presenting as well.
You know, once I sit here, it's just hitting right me, right? Like a bad honey. At least to me, me telling Costa thirty-three, what you're reporting with my colleague Ben Roberts and David Daly of Twenty-seven Carter Street LLC, who's also here with me. And I don't know Jonathan Miller, who's also with the owner. And the architect is Al DeVazio, but I don't believe he's able to join us this evening. The property is, I indicated, you go to the next slide, please, Caitlin, is at twenty-seven Carter Street, and we have already been to the Historic Commission, who has approved a roofline change for this. The applicant seeks to modify the structure by removing a roof on the existing rear one-story addition and constructing a second floor over that existing first floor, one-story addition. The property is in the R two zoning district. It was constructed in eighteen fifty, according to the assessor's records, and eighteen seventy, according to the district data sheets, where it is listed as contributory, and there is no Form B. Next slide. The current nonconform needs of the property are just about everything. The property includes two thousand six hundred and sixteen square foot area, where ten thousand square feet are required for a single failing home, thirty-six feet of frontage where ninety feet is required, front yard setback of point two, where twenty-five feet is required, a right side setback of seven point five, where ten feet is required, a left side at five point two, where ten feet is required. The property has lot coverage of twenty-nine point seven percent, or twenty-five percentage required. And the property has one parking space where two are required. This is a very typical Carter Street property. It does conform to the rear setback and the height of the property, and it does conform to the open space as well. Next slide, please. So as I said, the proposal is to remove the existing one-story roof in the back and construct a second story over it. There will be no changes to the proposed footprint, to the footprint of the building. The addition will not extend either side setback nonconformity along the property boundaries. It will increase, of course, the overall height of those nonconformities in upward extension, and that's why we are here. The addition will be less than five hundred square here because of the upper, is the site plan Carter Street is at the bottom of this slide. You see the driveway on the right-hand side. The existing one-story addition is in the back, that kind of, I'll call it an L, for the lack of a better term. And that's where the second-story addition is going to go. Next slide, please. So here we have the existing conditions, and what Alan has done on here, which I think is really helpful, is kind of cross-hatched where the addition is going to go, so you can see it's at the top of the existing elevations. The west elevation, which is the front elevation, and right below that, you can see the crosshatch of where you can see the addition is going to go on that rear one-story addition. And then the south elevation is actually along the drive. And then you can see that addition on the back, that one-story addition on that right-hand side of that south elevation. Next slide, please. And then again, this is the east elevation on the left-hand side, which is the rear. And then if you look at the bottom, you can see from a crosshatch where that new roofline is going to go, second story. And then the north elevation is the left side of the house, and then again, you can see where that is. So it's not atypical, you can see the very limited windows on that left-hand side, which is the one that's on the closest to the adjacent neighbor. I will add, while we're starting to go over this, you, we, this is a substitute set of plans that you adopted after our original application. When we were in front of the Historic Commission, even though they approved the roofline change in the back, there were a couple of comments about, we had had a hip roof on there, and it kind of went into that window in the back, which I'll show you in a minute. And there were a lot of, a couple of comments from some of the members, said, geez, a flat roof would be better back there, you ought to consider that. They didn't make it a condition, but David and Al thought, in fact, it was better, and so we submitted a substitute set of plans to the board that shows the the flat roof, and that's what this is. So here are the elevations. Again, you have the west elevation, which is the front, and you can see that second floor on the back there. And then the south elevation, which runs along the drive, and you'll see everything else is just being restored on the exterior of this building. And so you see the second floor go up on that, the one-story addition on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. And so here you can see the change in that roof structure. It actually, when the hip roof went in, it cut into that single window in the back gable. And so now this, it's a much more pleasing view, which is, and actually, both from a constructability point of view as well as a visual point of view, and so they took the kind of the comments from the Historic Commission. Again, you can see the changes. And really, no real changes on those windows, either on that north elevation, they still minimal. One of them changed because of the stairway going up to the back now, but otherwise, you still have minimal windows on that side. Next slide. So here are, this is a photograph of the rear, so you can see what the actual condition is. And that's where the second-story addition is going to go over that. Next slide. So the criteria for a special permit is, the first criteria is that there will be no new nonconformities, and here there are no new nonconformities. The second is that the proposed change is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing condition. Here, the proposal is adding only two hundred and twenty square feet of floor space. The wall area totals two hundred and fifty-eight square feet. There'll be no expansion, none of it will be taking up the existing view of the existing structure, and the proposal is still subservient to the existing historic structure. It will bring the upper ceiling of the addition in line with the upper ceiling of the existing structure, and the main roofline will not be disturbed. The design of the original structure to the east elevation is respected, and the existing placement of the forelight windows will be complemented by similar placement on the addition. The windows will have matching casing profiles and picture frame molding to the existing windows. Also, the proposal includes cedar clapboard, red cedar clapboards to match the existing structure. The existing eaves and rake profiles of the existing two-story structure will also be complemented. And I think next slide, please. I think what's also important is, you know, there's only essentially two hundred and twenty square feet, two hundred and ten of actual living space being added to the living area that is currently only one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight square feet. So the proposal is one thousand five hundred and eighty square feet of living area. So the proposal is 1,580 square feet of living area. There are only two other lots of the 13 surrounding lots on the block that are smaller. One is at Three Griffin Court, which is 1,118, and one is at One Griffin Court, which is 1,404. So if you go to the next slide. Do I have a? Yeah, so here's the surrounding properties. You can all see what the, you know, it's, it's pretty tight, dense, you know, modest-sized neighborhood. And this is not gonna stand out. This is the end result here, it's gonna be just over 1,500 square feet. So it's, it's quite modest and de minimis. And so we believe that proposed modifications will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and we request the board make that finding.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment in this public hearing on this application? Either for or against, or ask a question, or anything? Seeing none, is there anybody out there watching? If you're interested, hit the raise my hand button. I don't see anyone. So we will close the public participation period. And it looks like, you want to say something?
Yeah, I have two things I want to say. One, we did submit a, a proposed, you have a letter. We suggested in the cover letter that we could submit a by-write addition, one-story addition within the lot lines in the back that wouldn't need approval, but it would, because it would exacerbate the lot coverage. So I just wanted to correct that error, so that we couldn't do a by-write, but it would be within the lot, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so now we're to questions from the board. Who would like to begin? Okay, no questions. A very thorough presentation, okay?
I don't have any questions either.
Nor do I. Lynn, do you?
No questions.
I don't either. It was a very good presentation, very clear. So with that, we move to deliberations, and like somebody to, for our minutaker here, state the two-prong test as to whether or not this achieves it.
I'll go ahead and do that. So clearly, there's no new non-conformity being proposed here. And what is proposed, in my opinion, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. In fact, it's an improvement on what exists. And I think that the, the change to the flat roof was really whoever proposed that made a, had a good eye. Because one thing that, that occurs to me is it looks in the plans, it looks very similar to quite a number of the sort of Greek revivals with the side build-out that you see around town as proposed. So that's, that's really nice. So I, I can support this plan, so that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Delisle. The improvement here is rather modest, to say the least. And certainly after the improvement, the structure is compatible in terms of size, scale, and massing. But the neighborhood doesn't seem to be the smallest or the largest, so I don't see any issues there. So for those reasons, I find this application acceptable.
Thank you. Ms. Cow?
I, I agree with my colleagues, and I'd be inclined to support this application.
Thank you. Shagnon?
Yes, I, I agree with my colleagues, and I was very happy to see that, when looking at the zoning matrix, that it did meet three of the criteria: rear setback, height, and open space. So I can support this.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I agree with my colleagues, it's modest, and it's, it's, there's no intensification, it's just an upward extension in the back. So I can support this. So we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 27 Carter, ZNC 23-33.
Excuse me? Oh, there was a tree inside the lot?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, I had a note, I forgot to mention it, which is
Oh, the tree inside the?
Tree and sidewalk, the, well, Caitlin, why don't you comment?
So this appears to be a substantial rehab of the property. So this would trigger the street tree and sidewalk ordinance. We asked DPS for recommendations, and DPS came back and said to install a new sidewalk, no street trees required.
Okay. All right, would you like to modify your motion to include that?
I would like to modify my motion to include the tree and sidewalk recommendation. Okay, but there's no tree here. There's no, just sidewalks, just sidewalk, okay. All right, and you're okay, whoever seconded it, you're okay. Okay, who seconded it?
I, I will, I don't
I don't think we had a second.
I would be pleased to second Mr. Shagnon.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, so any more discussion? We'll go in for a vote. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Cow?
Yes.
Shagnon?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous. It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that gets us to approval of the minutes. Has everybody seen the minutes of our previous meeting? Is there, are there any comments, or any, do you guys need these for the record?
For the file?
Yeah, I can sort it. I didn't want to lose them.
Any will those get put up on the
Yeah, all right, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
It's moved and seconded, all in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. All right. I, I wanted to mention on our agenda, we used to have short-term rental units on here because we were waiting for input from legal counsel.
Yeah.
But in talking with the planning department earlier this morning, we still haven't gotten input, but we also aren't being overwhelmed with applications. And so I don't think it's fair for us to ask for legal input if we never get an application. So, and in fact, there's time, and ensures me, if we do get an application, then we can put the request back out. So if no one would mind, I think we should suspend our request for legal input on how to handle an investor-owned STRU until we actually get an application. At least one city councillor has predicted we'll never get one. So I mean, when we get one, there's time, and we should Does anybody object to suspending my request?
No.
No.
Lynn, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that, thank you.
Okay, all right.
That's interesting, all right.
So we'll do that.
We'll circle back, if we get one, of course, we'll, we'll make a decision.
Exactly, well, you, we have to move quickly then, because we'll, we'll be under the gun.
Yeah.
Mr. Bennett?
I just have, Andrew, maybe you can answer this. Does the ordinance require current STRUs to apply for approval by a certain date? Is there anything in the ordinance that requires that?
Yes, actually, there's a few months, we have, we have a few months left to do all that. But yeah, licensing has to be approved regardless of whether or not you're coming to the ZVA and an investor for a special permit. So regardless of that, folks have till, I don't think we'll get the exact date, but in this, this summer season, basically, to get those, you know, sorted out. So we did, I didn't mention it here, I don't think, sorry, I don't know if we, we gave it up by the ZVA, but we sent out letters to those folks who are operating in the city with the Aspergian listing. We understand, of course, that, you know, as we sort of monitor online activities, there might be new, you know, questions or concerns about a particular location, and of course, that's where we, we sort of look at the ordinance, is, is someone applying to the ordinance, because they have a permit, are they validly, you know, approved and operating? And then is there some sort of nuisance they're creating as an operator, as if they're, you know? But, but the long story short, I guess, is that, you know, we notified those folks of the new application, it's now online, guidance material, what's required, and the back of the zoning, you know, if you are a investor unit, strictly licensing, if you're in the other categories, but look at the website, read the ordinance. It is still posted as a PDF right now, but we will cross-reference the MUNI code, what is MUNI code, get something by the court's office, that will be posted along with the other ordinance, the MUNI codes, so just a brief gap. But basically, it's all there, and we're, you know, Jennifer and Ken, we can kind of give you so, you have an update, we're just at the start now of, I think, coming in. Like Ken said, I mean, probably just because of the parameters of the ordinance, it's, it's probably suspiciously likely we'll not get very many, you know, in that category because it's even, if nothing else, it's a short window for operators to even do it, so they might be focusing efforts elsewhere, which some of the judges put in early today, so, which I agree with. So we'll see if we get any, it doesn't mean we won't, you know, for sure it doesn't mean we won't, you do have the ability, and they do have the ability to apply you, but it's probably not likely to be very many, and, and any that we get.
We do have time if we do get some, we do have time to get the legal.
Most certainly, yeah.
Because I wish real badly if we, you know, spend legal resources to get input, and one never shows up.
Yeah.
It's not like we ask for a lot of legal input, you know?
Understood, all right, I'll watch, we'll see.
Do you have any, do you have anything else as far as an update from the planning director?
I don't, other than that, something that's been on my plate, because I, we, with all the stuff we have to do, we sometimes don't have as much time to work on progressive zoning changes. But one of the things that I do want to get squared away, we have some other comprehensive stuff we have to do for different areas of the city that are more long-range planning. Things like the MBK communities, you've heard about that, you know, things like that, but, which I won't bore this board with unless you want to hear about, like the planning board. But, but one thing we, we do want to circle back with is Jennifer, we have talked about various housekeeping-type updates, akin to the sort of mini-reform that was done a few years back. Just to, you know, clean up language and ambiguities and things like that. Older language, it may be just sort of not, not being as well, it could have been, addressed a few situations that have arisen, clarified a few things. So we have a few things like that, and we're gonna package those together, and of course, we'd like to bring those by you, just like we would the planning board, even though they're the ones that have a side burden obligation to have an hearing, just to, if nothing else, to hear if anyone who wants to weigh in on it, declaring that we're trying to reach in some of these updates, or, you know, that aren't substantive in nature necessarily, but are meant to address the type of issues that you sometimes see as a board here when things are appealed, or, you know, sometimes the clunky things that are, that happen. Again, we've progressed very well, I think, in recent years with decisions, having very tight language and structure in decisions, more so than we did in prior years, you know, behind the board. But the ordinance is general and totally still need, you know, updates, because there's so many, like the doc, you know, there's only pieces that we just have to bugging away, and stuff. Anyway, those things, we'll, we'll get your feedback on those too, and whether you want to give them visually or visually.
Andrew, I did, I had another question. How many STRUs were in operation last year? Yeah, as a guest?
Let's say about 150 that are, if you consider the state listing, now this is different than, we have not had our own one by.
So 100, whatever.
On the mainland?
This is, we're talking mainland, you hear.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we had 100 or 150, and you're thinking that we won't get any applicable?
Remember, it's only investors. It's only investors that would be coming to you, all the other ones and because they have a very short duration of a three-year period, one cycle, basically, you know?
For the investor own.
For the investor own.
Yeah.
And how many?
They have to decide as it were. Very many, I forget the numbers, I need to speak better to everyone.
Every one of them spoke at those hearings, so.
Yeah, but it still, it wasn't more than 10, right?
They were very vocal.
Yeah, yeah.
And then there are a lot. There are some that are technically investor-owned because they don't actually live there. Right. They say they do.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We've got, I don't know how many of those there are.
Yeah, and that's where
That's the one that came in here, wasn't it?
Uh, no.
Another one, okay. You have a lot on your street. I think we have four.
What street are you on?
Line, line.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's like in the thick of it.
All right, do you have anything else? I don't have anything else. I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I will second.
All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
The rule's done.
Thank you.
Thank you.